Hello and welcome to our 2023 review of the annual town meeting warrant. My name is Sean Riley. I am the moderator for the town of Abington. It's a volunteer position that I've enjoyed for several years now. And we have a town meeting coming up on Monday, April 3rd at 7 o'clock at the Abington Middle High School Auditorium. Need 150 voters to attend in order to start the meeting. And we encourage all registered voters to please do get there. Get there a little early before 7 o'clock to check in and find your seat. And we'll try to get started right away as soon as we have at least 150 people checked in. With me today is our town manager, Mr. Scott Lambiace. Scott, welcome aboard. We're going to try to, for the viewers at home, just give them a little insight into some of the articles that are on the warrant, or some of the discussions that we'll be having during town meeting and some of the votes that they'll be asked to cast. The copy of the warrant will be available on the town website, abbingtonma.gov. If anybody wants it, or you can call the town clerk's office at 982-2112, and they'll mail you a copy if you can't get it on the website. But we're going to go through them today with Scott. There's 24 articles, Scott. I know that you and your financial officers and the planning board, the finance committee have been working very diligently over the past many weeks. And we've now almost pretty much have a final draft to go over. We have 24 articles and we're, I think, ready to go for town meeting on April 3rd.
Yes.
So let's get started right away with the first three articles. Are pretty much somewhat routine type of articles. The first one always being New England's favorite, the payment of our snow and ice budget. Just give us a little background on where we are with the snow and ice budget.
Well, you know, this year actually has been better than most years. Better than many years. But our snow and ice budget, those numbers are sort of day of town meeting. Anything can happen in between. As most people know, we actually fund that for approximately $150,000 every year, knowing that we're likely to run into a deficit. And as we have in the past, we've run into a deficit this year. It'll be, you know, in the 200,000-plus area.
Which you're legally allowed to do. This is the only budget line you can always spend because it's New England.
Yeah, and you know, we often get the question of, well, why don't we just make that line item larger? Because there are years that we may get lucky and have a good year like this where, you know, we won't need it. And once you do raise that level of that, then you can never lower it again. So if we decide, look, we're going to make the minimum $200,000, then we're stuck with that.
Meaning that, yeah, you can, again, this is the one article by state law that if you budget 100,000 and you spend 300,000 because of a lot of snowstorms, then at town meeting, you know, a subsequent town meeting, you pay that overage, which is what Article 1 is doing.
Correct.
So we're going to have that actual dollar amount because we just had a snowstorm about a week ago. So we're trying to update that. We'll have that exact amount ready for the April 3rd town meeting. And God forbid if there's any snow after April 3rd, we'll take care of that at a future town meeting.
Right, exactly.
Article 2 is just a payment of prior year's bills. These always happen. The fiscal year ends every year on June 30th. So these are bills that came into the town after June 30th of last year and have to be paid with, basically with this year's funds. But to do that, you have to have a separate article and it has to be a nine tenths vote just to explain why was it late. And as I understand it, these are just a couple of small WB Mason-type bills.
Yeah, correct. And we work hard with our vendors every year and say, look, get your bills in, get them in on time. We have to pay them, but there's always a few items, whether it was something that was backordered or maybe we had a disagreement on it. But, you know, in this year, it's actually pretty light, 478 plus or minus. And, yeah, just WB Mason bills. And obviously, we have the goods and we want to pay for them.
And kudos to our town accountant, Andrew, who does a fantastic job of making sure every bill's paid and every penny is accounted for. Article 3, again, this was submitted by the water department regarding sick leave buyback. This is to actually fund 35,000 from the town of Abington. Rockland's going to take a similar vote, 35,000 from Rockland, to pay for some sick leave buyback for some retiring water department employees. Pretty straightforward by contract when they retire.
Contractual obligations. And again, this is coming out of the Water Receipts Reserve Fund. It's not coming out of our operating budget.
Right. We just need a vote to authorize it so that those longtime employees can enjoy their retirement and get what they're contractually entitled to. Article 4 is the biggest, most important article of the annual town meeting. That is the approval of this coming year's annual operating budget. So it has the budget for salaries and expenses for all of our town departments. We're going to have a separate handout which will give you all of the details of that budget. And again, that will be available online at www.abbingtonma.gov. But in general, Scott, what can you tell us about the upcoming budget?
Well, you know, it's a tight year. You know, the same things that everybody has been feeling at their own homes, we're feeling in the town. You know, increased electricity costs and increased fuel costs, you know, waste hauling. You name it, everything has gone up. And most of it driven by the cost of gasoline, oil. So when we started the process this year, we basically said to the department heads, look, tell us what you need. What is it that we need just to make sure that we're providing the same level of service to the community? And that's what they submitted. It was still difficult. We all gave up, or most of the departments had to give up a little bit of something, somewhere, or not add new positions. The DPW, you know, could really use another laborer position. And as everybody knows, that's one of the work forces. And unfortunately, they're just not able to fill it this year. The school department looking for a Portuguese learning position. And again, it was an extremely important position for the town to have. It's just not feasible this year. But we, you know, we have a commitment to keep working towards those goals over the next fiscal year. But we do have a balanced budget. It took a lot of work. One thing that was very important to the finance committee and to the planning board and to the selectmen overall was that we start seeking a town planner position. And that was really the big ask this year. We have funded that. It is an important position. We're hoping to do some, a joint regional position with the town of Rockland. They've seemed pretty open to it. It would make it a much more affordable position for both towns. And our goals are quite similar with what we need. We both have support staff. So we're looking forward to that. I think it'll happen. But otherwise, yeah, it was a lot of work. The finance committee will be working, you know, right up to the end on the budget. It was a tough year and it took a lot of time. But we started early and I'm glad we did and we got it done.
I do want to send a shout out to, we've got some really good, high-quality, experienced department heads in the town of Abington. And, you know, it's their job and their responsibility to, you know, really ask for what, as much as they can get for their department and for their employees and for, you know, new equipment or better equipment. And so they all do that. Every year they go through the exercise of submitting, you know, kind of, what do I need to kind of keep what I maintain my existing services? What would I really like to add? And all the departments do that. Then it comes down to guys like you, the town manager, to try to make the numbers work. And then you have the finance committee, which for those of you who don't know at home, is a volunteer board of nine residents that basically review everything Scott is reviewing. Scott presents all the information along with our town accountant and some of the department heads, literally on almost a weekly basis for the three months leading up to town hall, three, four months leading up to town meeting, I should say. So Dan Eddy is the chairperson of the finance committee and he'll be making, he'll be speaking on behalf of the committee at the town meeting. I just want to say thank you to the nine volunteers on that committee and to all the department heads for the work you do. And Scott, I mean, I know you get paid for it, but we want to thank you for doing it. It is, it is not an easy job to balance. What's the total budget amount in the neighborhood of?
69.
Right.
And it is, it's incredible work. I would not, I would not be able to do it. Andrew Nokum, our finance director. We wouldn't be able to do it without the assistance of the finance committee and the work that they put into it and the department heads. Like you said, I hope folks have the opportunity to watch and catch it. It does get posted up on Abington Cable. But they do, they talk to every department, every department head, and they ask what their needs are, what is going on in their departments? Are there areas that we can save? It's a lot of work, a lot of time, but it's necessary. And I'm glad we do have such a good committee.
Yeah, they do a great job of really picking apart everything and asking the tough questions that the people at home are yelling at their television.
They do try to anticipate what people are going to ask.
So moving on then to Article 5, which is the funding of our capital plan. It's something we break out separately from the operating budget. And this is a list of basically equipment or vehicles or infrastructure updates and upgrades that each department has requested for funding. And you'll see the list which appears on your screen right now that will be obviously benefits to all of the different towns. We have, you know, purchasing three police cruisers for the, for the police department, which is basically an annual thing because, you know, people don't realize that the police cruisers are used 24 hours a day. It's not like your car and my car where we park at home at night while we're sleeping for the night. No, those cars are running. So they get a lot of mileage on them pretty quickly. And the DPW is going to be getting a new pickup truck to replace a 1997 pickup truck, which is an old pickup truck that they've kept alive. Just going down, water department has a lot of infrastructure improvements. Some work down at the Myers Ave, trying to work on some of the PFAS work. Sewer department has some updates, getting a, replacing a 2013 utility truck. Park department, always some very visible updates, replacing, doing some fence work at Island Grove along Central Street. And also some new fencing around, at Island Park around the basketball court and playground area, which will be great. And they're going to get some new mowers and replace a truck. A 2001 truck is going to be replaced. So that's what, 20, more than 20 years old. Fire department, a very important issue is to purchase the new ambulance, which as I understand, it takes about two years from when we approve the purchase to actually receive the ambulance. So this is something that the fire department, the fire chief, not all, has asked. Finance committee has agreed, town managers agree that this is something that we need to keep our ambulance, you know, updated. And then the school department, continuing the purchase of laptops for every student, which is great. And then some upgrades to the gymnasium floor at Beaver Brook and walk-in cooler at Woodsdale School. You can see this all online again at abbingtonma.gov. But we essentially would, one vote would approve all of these purchases unless there's, if there's any questions that people want to ask about an individual one, you certainly have the opportunity to do so at town meeting on April 3rd, Monday, April 3rd. But Scott, I mean, I know this itself took a lot of work with trying to cull down the list to something that we could, you know, establish some priorities, but yet fund it all.
Yeah, correct. And, you know, we, we went through the process with the Collins Center out of UMass Boston over the past year and a, just over a year to work on a comprehensive capital improvement plan. It's a great plan. It spans 10-plus years. It's a living document that will, will adjust as we go because there'll be some things that we might have in this year that we want to do. But we just couldn't do it. This year, the capital plan is largely funded with free cash. Free cash, as we know, is, you know, previous years when revenue has come in better than expected and departments have been able to not expend all of what was allocated to them, that returns to the town as free cash the following year. So we have about $2 million this year, which is a, which is a good number. So we're largely able to do almost everything that we wanted to do with free cash, with the exception, obviously, of the new ambulance. It's a, you know, just under a half a million dollars. So that is a borrowing request. But again, it wouldn't be something, we need, we need the authorization to borrow so we can order it. We actually won't borrow for it probably for over a year, close to two years. And, you know, so at that time, some of our debt is coming off anyway. So it really won't have too much of an effect on the operating budget. But again, that's borrowing within the operating budget.
Right, so you're planning, as some debt falls off, this debt would jump on. It's only a $450,000 debt, I believe, spread out over a number of years.
And it's important. We have, we have an ambulance that's been in for service for quite some time now. You know, so it's very difficult when we have one that's off the road. We have another one that's, you know, our oldest one is aging and it's time to replace it. So it's good. There are certain projects that we did take out of this that we want to get done. We expect to get those done with use of American Recovery Plan Act funds.
American Rescue Plan, ARPA.
Yeah. And, you know, some of those are actually, you know, we need a support vehicle for our sewer infrastructure, which, you know, a six-wheel dump truck that they need for that. So there'll be certain things that we'll try and push through there.
So the capital plan again is available for you to take a look at. And you can ask your questions and take your vote to support it if you'd like or object to it if you'd like. Article 6, moving on, is the Community Preservation Budget, which has been a very successful program in Abington. The CPA, the Community Preservation Act was passed a number of years ago. And there's a, what they call a surcharge that's included on your tax bill. It's not actually considered to be a part of your real estate tax. It's a surcharge. So you see that $30 or $40 fee, whatever. That goes into the separate Community Preservation Fund. And our Community Preservation Committee, which is made up of a bunch of residential volunteers, basically reviews requests from the residents or from town departments to fund certain reinvestments in our community. And they're limited to what they can spend this money on. It can be on historical preservation. It can be on open space and recreation, or it can be on community housing. So each year they review them. And you're seeing now over the last few years, some of these investments come into fruition, whether it be new fencing of the ball fields or there's been some historical upgrades that, you know, through the town clerk's office and through the Historical Commission. And this year, they're proposing some work on the Open Space Recreation Plan to kind of have a master plan to make sure any future money is spent well. The Green Wave Connector Trail Design, which I want to talk to you about more in a minute. Griffin's Dairy Fence Post is a community garden up there and they're going to replace the old wooden fence posts with some steel or metal fence posts for more durability. And then the historical resources, you see the historical signs, the pavilion repairs at Island Grove. For those of you familiar with Island Grove, that's that kind of circular building, the, not the, not the stone building, but the circular wooden building that's kind of up on the hill. And the historical inventory, a grant match. Island Grove Bridge Design, that is something that's very important for the town and especially those who really utilize Island Grove. We'll talk more about Island Grove Bridge at the end of the meeting also. And then some money being deposited with the Affordable Housing Trust to help with future planning for some sort of town investment into community housing. So Scott, the Green Wave Connector Trail Design. I was very interested to learn more about that. Can you tell us what that is intended to do?
And as some of you, or hopefully everybody remembers, CPC has actually purchased a piece of land last year at a special town meeting.
Using the Community Preservation Funds, right?
Using these funds. And these funds by, as Sean said, it's a surcharge that everybody pays into. But there's also state matching funds to a certain degree, to a certain percentage that
Changes every year.
Changes year to year. But, but it is really a great deal because it does allow us to do projects like this. So that piece of property that we had purchased last year sort of connects and creates a big campus here at, behind the library, the town hall, connects to the track, the Riley Track?
Yeah, Riley Field, yeah.
The Riley Field and the high school and the middle school. So what our proposal is, is there was at one point a sewer line that had been put out from behind this campus area out to the Orchard Lane Buckboard area. And we want to follow that with a paved walking bike trail. You know, so we are actually working on grants. And a lot of these things that you see in here, we'll dovetail with grant money and/or ARPA funds to help get these projects initiated and completed. Most of them, we won't be looking for tax dollars for. So that is actually, you know, really nice. But so this Green Wave Connector, as you'll see later on, we're going to talk about a bike trail that goes down Washington Street. And essentially, this would, you know, connect from Frollo in the Memorial Field, pretty much all the way into the campus has got a bike trail and a walking path now. But then we would connect right up into that Orchard Lane Buckboard area. And eventually, we want to have through sidewalks, bike lanes, and, you know, walking trails right up to Ames Noel. So basically, we want to connect one side of the town to the other through recreational.
So theoretically, you could ride your bike from Ames Noel up to Hancock Street, come through the bike path down to the library, town hall, go down Glen Owits Way, stop at any field you want to go to, or continue, cross Route 18, go down the bike path on Lincoln Boulevard, then follow the bike path on Washington Street. You could even go out through the cemetery where the cross-country route is. And you could actually then connect to Griffin's Dairy and the rail trail that leads you into Rockland, Hanover, Duxbury.
And actually, that's kind of the final phase in our mind is, well, probably the two final phases would be connecting direct over to Griffin's because that also connects down towards the rail trail. And then when the roundabout is done, that's over in the Chestnut area, to have some sort of connecting all the way down there that we have bike or, you know, bike lane improvements and walking improvements. So along all of these areas, you know, there will be upgrades to crosswalks, sidewalks, signage. And ultimately, the nice part of updating our Open Space and Recreation Plan, that allows us to ask for grant money for a lot of these different ideas and projects.
That's great. That Washington Street connector that we're going to be talking about later is something that, as a kid, when I was riding my bike, I used to drive right down by the Frollo and I'd go right by the ECC. And I would continue down Washington Street. And then I would take my bike and go over the Memorial Bridge to get to Island Grove. So it's kind of interesting to me to see all of these things being upgraded and connected and a great safety improvement with, you know, potentially new sidewalks and a bike lane. So it's just going to be easier for kids and adults to kind of get around town, especially when, you know, in the great weather. Be great to see people out and enjoying it, but in a safer way for both drivers and bike riders and pedestrians.
And again, you know, it ties into what you'll see in here is the interpretive historical signs. So you'll get into certain areas that will be along these routes and over by Island Grove, where we do have historical, you know, whether it might be houses or buildings or the stone or the art, whatever it may be. But there'll be signs that'll be put there just to let people know. They'll be able to read and find information out about this. I think at some point, we'll have a QR code in there that will be able to, you know, folks will be able to just kind of scan and find out even more information about it.
Great. So interactive Abington, I guess it would be.
Exactly. You know, there's a lot of amenities out there between the fields and the trails and, you know, Ames Noel. It just will be great to connect them all for everybody to enjoy it more.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of people have, you know, live in this town in Abington have never, don't even know that we have a state park, you know, Ames Noel State Park, and haven't gone out there and really enjoyed the beauty of Ames Noel, never mind Island Grove Park. Has a lot of things, a lot of kids fishing, swimming, hike, just walking around. It's great. And then that brings me to the Island Grove Bridge Design light item in the Community Preservation. That is another step forward in basically restoring the Memorial Bridge, a 300-foot-long bridge that was built in 1912. So it's now over 110 years old. So that's part of the, we've already done some study work with previous CPA money to determine what the issues were. Obviously, the iron railings that deteriorated have to be replaced, but they were also looking at the cement.
The structure, and they were looking up and underneath. Yeah, so basically, and we're actually, you'll see later at the end of town meeting, there is another article about this. But we're seeking a lot of grant funding or as much grant funding as we can. Step one now is to put a design together. We know what's wrong with it. We know what has to be done. Now we put together a bid package, so to say. This is what we need done. We want to put it out to bid, who can, who can do this? And we expect that to be roughly $100,000.
To do the design work.
Right.
The bid package.
Yeah. And so we're asking for some money through this. And we're also doing whatever we can to get grant money for it. We've reached out to Senator Lynch's office, or Congressman Lynch's office and to our local legislative, you know, team to say, look, any funding that we can get, anything we can have to help, you know, preserve this historic structure, you know, we, you know, we could use it. So we're, you know, we're moving forward on it. I would hope to see that, you know, we'll have something ready to stop building within a year or so or start repairing. The actual footings to this, the part that's in the, in the water, sound.
Yeah, solid. They're all set, thankfully, because that would have been a big expense.
Yeah, so, you know, a lot of what, a lot of this is, you know, really superficial work and then the railings. We want to make sure that we're also taking into consideration accessibility issues. So we want to make sure that at the end of this, both ends of it are accessible to anybody who can, you know, might have some sort of issue.
This was built in 1912 by the residents of Abington. It's a memorial to the Civil War veterans. And it wasn't just, just only a few years ago where the town funded the restoration of the memorial arch at the eastern end of the bridge. So this is now looking at the bridge itself. And again, this is a great example of how you and your financial officials are using community preservation money and grant money and American Rescue Plan money from the federal government all to try to get these things done without using our tax dollars. Trying to use our tax dollars to keep our police and fire, DPW and schools and library all doing well. So again, it's, there are a lot of moving parts, but there's also a lot of coordination. So, you know, congrats and good work, good work there.
Keep going.
So we'll be looking at Article 6 for your thoughts and your vote on Article 6 about all of those items. And the Community Preservation Committee is a public committee that meets. You can go online and learn more about what they're looking at. And if you have an idea, you can contact that committee and they can tell you how to walk you through that process where they review and then they select what to be funded. And then they have to bring it to town meeting for the final vote to approve those expenditures. Article 7 is an annual article regarding the funding of Abington Student Transportation for those who attending out-of-district vocational schools such as Southeastern Votech out in Eastern Massachusetts, EASTON, Eastern Massachusetts, and also Norfolk Aggie, which is in Walpole. This is done every year, pretty straightforward article. It's just, it's just over $16,000 for those bus routes.
Yeah, and it's not really much of an increase over the last year, all things considered.
Eight and nine are also kind of annual articles that we see. Number eight is $5,000 to fund the Health Imperative Violence Prevention and Intervention Program for Services Provided to Survivors of Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence. This is for the benefit of Abington residents who may need those services. And Article nine is to fund $2,500 towards the arc of the South Shore for services provided to Abington residents with intellectual and developmental disabilities. These are two things that the town has continually funded every year for the $5,000 and $2,500, which is kind of supplements the budget of those two entities, all for the benefit of Abington residents in need. So these are usually pretty quick votes, but if anyone has any questions at town meeting, feel free to bring them up. Article 10 is a purchase of land off Central Street. It's 199 Central Street. And to kind of focus in on where that is, that is the property immediately to the right of the police station, if you're looking at the police station. It is now, correct me if I'm wrong, a vacant piece of land. There was a very rundown, dilapidated house that was deemed unsafe and was taken down by court order, I believe. So now it is vacant, privately owned, and the town, well, you can tell me, the town has been trying to talk to this owner about the status of this property.
Yeah, you know, we've reached out to the owner in several different ways. We'll, you know, through mail and phone calls. And our intention is to, is to use that property for the proposed DPW fire station project. This would allow for a secondary access. Again, it's, the land has been unkept, overgrown. Occasionally, you might see a junked car out there that we have to chase them for to get it out of there. But for the most part, you know, the property owner has kept up on the taxes either, you know, personally or through folks that have liens on the property. So it is an important piece for the project. So we do intend to, to purchase this land from the owner and we're just going to keep working forward. This will authorize us to either take it by eminent domain or otherwise purchase it.
So this, this is an out-of-town owner, a person who does not live in Abington owns it. This was, eventually, there'll be a dollar amount basically in the motion that would authorize the town or the Board of Selectmen in your office to either negotiate a purchase up to that amount or lower. But we, whatever dollar amount we put in, you can't go over that. Or to use it for eminent domain proceedings to see if the town, they don't make real estate anymore. So it's something that the town has always kind of looked at to kind of create a public safety campus in that area, as I understand it. So Article 11, funding of roadway infrastructure improvement projects. This is $500,000 for some design work and really to improve some of the stormwater management issues on some of these streets. And when we say stormwater management, that's now a big focus of attention for all the cities and towns of Massachusetts. So we're looking at trying to, sometimes it's upgrading catch basins. Sometimes it's redoing the pavement to kind of channel the water where you want it to go to kind of keep our abutting wetlands and rivers and streams clean and also kind of help with the safety of the roadways. You don't want water freezing up to be ice.
You don't want a ponding in certain areas where it shouldn't. Yeah. And we talk about this actually probably in a couple of places every year throughout the warrant, the MS4, we call it, you know, it's a regulation that has come down from the state and probably started at the federal level and moved down to the state. But it requires us to do certain things. And they most probably recall when we bought the street sweeper, it's because, you know, we have to sweep every street in town twice every year now just to collect any particulates because we don't want it to get into our stormwater. We don't want that to eventually leach into our groundwater, which is our drinking water.
Clog our catch basins.
Yeah. We don't want polluting our, you know, we don't want it making it out to any of our ponds or just even polluting the environment. So it is, it's a worthwhile program. It comes with its expenses that we deal with every year. But this is, this, this will largely take care of, you know, several roads here for quite some time.
Yes. So if I could ask our producers if they could put that article back up on the screen because there are a couple of streets that are specifically named that would be benefiting from an approval of this article. And I just want the residents of those streets to know, you can see them right there. Chapel Street, Cliff Street, Lake Street, Wilson Place, Hershey Lane, Shaw Avenue, Washington Street, from Adams Street to Bedford Street, and Bicknell Hill Road. Those are the streets that would get the benefit of these street improvements, street and drainage improvements. And obviously, this is something that's going to continue in years to come with more streets. The DPW has a list and it's, actually it's online where they rank the quality, really the amount, the disrepair of some of the streets and try to attack those streets first, obviously. And just try to keep updating that list as they're able to kind of take a few off the list. So those streets, Chapel Street, Cliff Street, Lake Street, Wilson Place, Hershey Lane, Shaw Avenue, Washington Street, between Adams and Bedford Street and Bicknell Hill Road. If you're a neighbor there, that might be of a concern to you and other reason why you should be there at town meeting on Monday, April 3rd at 7:00. Actually, get there around 20, 20 minutes before 7:00 so you can check in.
And an important thing about this article too is the intention, this $500,000, we actually expect to use the Opera Funds for this. So again, it won't be tax money. We're not looking to borrow for it. This is money that we're going to use that Plymouth County has just under $3 million that they have allocated to the town of Abington for us to use for certain projects. And infrastructure improvement projects are one of those sort of bucket list of projects we can use it for. So we intend to do that. We allocate some to Abington Joint Water Works. We did that last year. I think approximately half a million dollars went specifically to that. And we'll continue to do that. We're working with Abington Rockland Joint Water Works constantly to see what their needs are. The Sewer Department to find out what their needs are. And then obviously, these kind of projects, these stormwater projects, we want to make sure we're taken care of.
Great. And if that, if an approval of that article helps us get those Opera Funds and all.
Yeah. I mean, you know, again, it's sometimes, because there will be other funds that will be mixed in with a lot of this work will be done in-house. The, you know, the largest part of it, the biggest expense is the grinding and grading. And then obviously, we have to, you know, put it all back together when we're done. But a lot of the other work, the cleaning and the repairing of the basins, once we get them opened up and exposed, the lining of the manholes, stuff like that, that's done in-house, again, by our DPW, which does.
Women's work.
Yeah. They really do. They're the backbone of the town.
They certainly are. And I think John Stone and all his men down there at the DPW and his women who work in that office, they are incredibly efficient. I got to give a shout out to them. Okay, moving on. Article 12, which means we're halfway through our 24-article warrant. Article 12 is a vote to accept Marshfield into the South Shore Vocational Technical Regional District, the school district. This is the school that's in Hanover. This is, this would be just a vote, all the different towns that are already in the South Shore School, Regional School District are taking a vote to allow Marshfield to join the party.
Correct. Yeah. And actually, you know, Tom Hickey will be there.
Superintendent.
Superintendent at South Shore Votech. He'll be at town meeting and always happy to answer any questions. He will be, depending on when you watch this, he will be at the next selectments meeting, which is Monday, the 27th. So if you happen to catch this before that and you want to have any, see any questions answered about that. But yeah, essentially, you know, right now, there's a certain allocation of a number of students allowed from each community that is part of it that, and then right now, I think what happens is not everybody fills that, what their allotment is, and other towns are allowed to come in. And Marshfield has, I think, been sending people. I think one of the, you know, the questions is what will this do to the allocation?
Is there a negative to Abington?
Right. And it doesn't appear that there is. And I think I want to leave those questions to be answered by Tom Hickey though.
Yeah. There are eight schools already in the South Shore Regional in Hanover. So Marshfield will become the ninth school. And I think I just read in the paper that South Shore Vocational just got accepted into the MS, the Massachusetts School Building Authorities Program to fund some significant renovations or additions, expansions of that school down there in Hanover, which obviously would make more room for all of the towns.
Well, and as you may recall, we actually authorized borrowing for that at previous town, probably the last town meeting. And in that borrowing, you know, everything's on hold.
Right.
With that project, because now that MSBA is involved, they're hoping to be able to use those funds. And now they're doing, you know, a bigger look at it. Do we need?
Yeah.
What do we need? What is our enrollment and should it be expanded?
It's a pretty popular and successful school and a nice choice for Abington students who want to go the vocational route, which is, as we all know, very much in demand out there in the job market. So moving on to Article 13, this is the Funding of Union Contracts. The Fire Department Union, the Police Department Unit and the Library Department Union are all, we're in negotiations this year with the town via the town manager and the town council and all those people who get involved. And what is the status of this? We have some blank lines in this draft warrant. But what do you, what do you think we'll be voting on when it comes to town meeting on April 3rd?
Yeah. It'll be somewhere in the area, all three combined, of, you know, $700,000 plus or minus. And we expect to have them all ratified at the selectman meeting, probably on Monday night. And then they will have the actual numbers for a town meeting. But in total, that, you know, largely that will be, obviously, police and fire will be the lion's share of that amount.
Because they're bigger unions with more employees.
Exactly. I mean, there's 20-plus employees in each of those unions and a lot, a lot more moving parts. And obviously, they're 24/7.
Right.
And the, you know, the contracts, we took, they took some time. You know, we realized that we had some retention issues. We had recruitment issues. And we weren't competitive with surrounding communities. And we've worked to make, make up for that, to make sure that we are competitive with surrounding communities. It's, you know, mostly sort of rolls in over the three-year period of the contract to get us to that point. We tried to do as much as we can in the first year. Again, just for retention reasons and recruitment reasons. So they're all good contracts. They're fair contracts. I think we're in a good place. And, you know, we'll, we'll no more on town meeting floor.
Great. So I guess the procedure is after the town and the unions have come to an agreement, then it goes to town meeting to approve the funding of the contract. Just approve the funding for the next coming year and then the rest of it just kind of takes its course. So those will be, a little more detail will be given to you for Article 13 at the town meeting on April 3rd. Article 14 and 15, it's pretty straightforward articles. Article 14 is to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5N, which authorizes the Board of Selectmen to establish a veteran property tax work-off abatement program, which is another benefit to our veterans and also the spouses of surviving veterans or disabled veterans. Sounds like a great benefit to our veterans and this, but this is something we have to vote to authorize the Selectmen to set up.
Yeah. And it's much like the senior program that we do for work off. It's, you know, they can work up to X amount of hours for a total of, I think it's like $600.
It's up to $1,500 now. I just read it yesterday. Yep. So it's up to $1,500 they can, they could generate if they, depending on how many volunteer hours they want to put into the, for the town. So it is a nice benefit for those who might be able to utilize it.
And it's not, and again, you know, this is something that throughout the town, these services are very much needed and used. You'll see many times right now, currently, you'll have the seniors that might be doing work down at the Senior Center and helping out, whether it's, you know, whatever, whatever they may need down there checking people in or helping with.
Clerical work.
Programs. We have folks who work over at the transfer or the compost site.
Right.
And otherwise, you know, we wouldn't be able to have the hours of operation over there. So there's lots of different areas that they fill in and they help out and it's much needed and things that we, again, we would otherwise not be able to do.
So that'll take a vote for Article 14 to allow the town to implement that for the benefit of our Abington veterans. Article 15 is a local option to establish designated safety stone zones, safety zones. Tell us a little bit about this one, Scott.
So, you know, we get calls and issues from time to time on different neighborhoods and different streets that we want to look at the speed, the, you know, the travel speed. And the way Mass Department of Transportation looks at it is, look, you know, they'll set a posted speed limit and it's up to them to sort of decide. They base it on how wide the roads are, how close the houses are to one another.
This is whether it's a state highway or a local downstreet.
Right. And, and more or less, you know, they have sort of their underlying feeling that, look, no matter what it says, the road conditions dictate how fast you should be going. You know, so it may be posted at 40, but that road condition may not, you know, depending on all sorts of circumstances and the totality of them, you may not, you know, 40 may not be the best speed.
Might be too fast for what the neighbors really think is.
Right. And now at that point, you know, the town might say, you know, well, we'd like to lower it. And we have to do engineering studies and traffic counts. And then we have to submit all sorts of information over to Mass DOT. And then it's still ultimately up to them. And they can say, well, look, it just doesn't warrant it for whatever reason. This would allow the town to say, have that control and take the control back where it belongs. We are better situated to know what our, you know, what is, what is the safest speed in our neighborhoods for our residents.
Right.
So it doesn't mean that, you know, that we're going to make everything 25 miles an hour.
Right.
But it would allow the Selectmen on certain instances to look at certain neighborhoods, certain streets and say, yeah, the houses are thickly settled. They're too close together. The street's too narrow. We don't really believe that we want to go through the Mass Stop process. We're going to say it's as low as 25 miles per hour unless otherwise posted.
Right. And to kind of answer a question we might anticipate in advance, this would not allow the Board of Selectmen of the town of Abington to lower the speed limit on Route 18. Because Route 18 is a state highway. It doesn't affect the state highways, but they would have authority to review the speed limit on some of the local roads and make a decision on a case-by-case basis. So that would be Article 15 for your discussion and vote. Article 16, Match Grant Funding to See If The Town Will Vote To Raise Or Appropriate A Transfer $16,038.91 For The Purpose Of Providing A Match Of 5% For A Grant To Purchase New Portable Radios For The Fire Department. This seems like a good deal for the town. If we put up $16,000, the grant will put up over $300,000.
Yeah. And again, it's another example of, you know, the department ads and actually members of the department, I believe this was one of the captains that put this grant together as we've seen before, whether at the Fire Department, the captains and actual firefighters have, have taken it upon themselves to go and seek out and do what they can to find grants for the town. This is huge. You know, obviously, it speaks for itself. But, you know, we thank them for their hard work and getting us these grants and.
Yeah. But we need your vote in order to approve Article 16 and in order to fund our portion of the grant to 5%, so the Fire Department can get the new portable radios. Remember, we need at least 150 registered voters to be in attendance so we can get that meeting started at 7:00. So please bring your friends. I think there's a possibility that this review show might be longer than the actual town meeting. Our goal is to try to explain some of the things, get this information out to you ahead of time. So when we get to town meeting, the majority of questions might be already asked and answered.
And the important one, these articles, the 16 and 17, they didn't show up in the original draft. I didn't actually have them in there because these, they came to us late when we found out that, hey, we have this opportunity. But the opportunity won't be there. We have to act on these.
Right.
If for whatever reason, we can't get the business of the town done, we're going to lose out on these grants. So we do need, we need everybody's participation. There's a lot of money on the town. These radios that they're replacing are in need of replacing. It's not that, hey, we got a grant, let's just replace them. They're, these guys are legitimately, you know, piecing together older radios and trying to seek them out just to try and keep their equipment working.
Yeah. It's a really a critical safety issue for some of the guys who put their lives, and the women. Men and women who put their lives on the line for us. So that'll be Article 16. And again, everything you can review at abingtonma.gov. Go to the Town Meeting Information section. You'll see this warrant. You'll see the budget information. Article 17 is what we alluded to earlier, the Washington Street Bike Lane and Pedestrian Improvements to basically fund $69,000 for the cost of designing, estimating, engineering and construction administration of the Washington Street Bike Lane and Pedestrian Improvements. Want to add a little bit to that?
So yeah, again, this is, this goes back to our connectivity trails and our Green Wave Connector, as we like to call it. That'll, you know, sort of make it accessible from one part of town to the other, one center to the other, right across by the fields, by Frollo and Memorial Field, up Lincoln and into Glenowitz, and then eventually, you know, right over into Ames Noel. So this is, this is a key part of it where we have an opportunity for a $500,000 grant to do, to build most of these improvements on that Washington Street portion of this. Again, we need $69,000 to pay for this. The $69,000 is, we're either going to use free cash or I, my thought in a, is that we'll use the American Recovery Plan Act money. Again, the reason that we asked for the vote on it is when the, when we go to Plymouth County and we want to use their, that money for any of these projects, if there are other funds or other grants involved, they still want a vote of town meeting.
Yep.
So essentially, that's where we're looking to get this money from. It's a half-million-dollar project and we have to put up something for it.
We've had a pretty mild winter, but I know everyone's still waiting for that temperature to kind of get over 60, 70 on a consistent basis. And I think we'll see a lot of bikes and pedestrians out there, both young and old. So these improvements over the next couple of years, I think, are really going to be a nice perk, noticeable benefit for the residents.
Well, you know, it'll make it safer. We want to do things, especially in that area of, you know, Frollo and Beaverbrook, that we want to do stuff to sort of control and slow people down a little bit, make sure that they're aware of, that they're in that area. We want to make sure people can cross the street and get up to Lincoln and then across to Glenowitz in a safe manner.
To your point, the flashing speed limit sign, the little radar sign on Washington Street and the one on Hancock Street, that was American Rescue Plan funds that you had elected to purchase several months ago and installed it, just to kind of remind riders to kind of take your foot off the pedal, slow down for the safety of everyone. Okay, moving on to Article 18, Police Department Separation From Civil Service. I'm learning a lot about civil service and talking and trying to understand the purpose of this article, but let you summarize it for the viewers at home.
Yeah. So this, this is something that has been negotiated with the, the police union. We hope it's, you know, everything's going forward with it. Again, we're waiting for final ratification. But, you know, civil service in, at least in our experience, has really caused recruitment problems for the town. And we want to make sure that we do, you know, and we're working with the union to make sure that we're mirroring anything as far as veteran preferences or promotional requirements and things like that. But at the end of the day, it's a lot to do with how we recruit from, from the beginning. And even to the point where, you know, you could, you couldn't even do a cadet program with the way civil service works right now. So again, you know, it's been negotiated. It's not something that we're, we're just doing. We've talked to the union about it. Anybody who currently is protected under civil service, who currently works for the, for the department and who is even in the academy, we have some, some great kids in the academy now. We can't wait for them to come out. They'll also be grandfathered in under civil service. So it's actually something that probably wouldn't affect us until our, until hiring a year from now or maybe.
Great. So this would authorize the town to submit a bill to the state legislature to approve that change for the town of Abington. But I understand there's also some review going on where we may just need a town meeting vote and not have to submit to the legislature, but the town council's trying to iron that out between now and town meeting. So we will get. So we will get you that updated information at town meeting, but you got to be there to hear it, which is Monday, April 3rd, 7:00 at the auditorium. Okay, Article 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23 are five zoning amendments that have been vetted and proposed by the Abington Planning Board. Basically, the majority of these, the reasons are to, again, you've heard us mention stormwater management earlier in today's discussion. And the planning board was required and strongly suggested to make some updates. So a consultant reviewed our bylaws and then submitted some proposed language additions, subtractions, clarifications to kind of basically work together, kind of make everything blend and coordinate across the zoning bylaw. So most of these, again, Article 19 is regarding sand and gravel operations. I don't remember the last time we had a sand and gravel operation, but we want to update the bylaw in case it ever would come to fruition. And basically, the change would just say, hey, if you're going to scrape off some loam on a, you know, 10-acre parcel and dig up the gravel, you got to keep the loam and then put it back when you're done so that grass and vegetation will grow and not just leave an open pit. That's Article 19. Now, Article 20, reductions in parking lot pavement, just gives the planning board and the zoning board a little bit more flexibility when they're approving projects to make sure that we're not creating just vast, huge paved parking lots if it's really not necessary, that they can vote, the planning board in this case would vote to maybe not require 10-foot-wide spaces, but nine-foot-wide spaces, depending on what type of use, usually a commercial use is discussed. And it also allows them to allow the developer to use impervious, sorry, pervious pavers in certain areas, which you might be, you know, you see the areas where it's either a gravel area or sometimes patio blocks instead of pavements. That might be in the outskirts of a parking lot. Again, just to let the water, the rainwater kind of go into the ground, back into the water table instead of just hitting pavement and sheeting across into a drainage system.
Yeah, and these are updates that, you know, many communities, you know, and probably, I guess in the 80s or so, were, you know, wanted to see more pavement for whatever reason in wider parking areas. And we've come to realize that it doesn't help us with getting our water, you know, back into the airifier. And so there's still, you know, within this, designs on how to filter and clean it, the impervious pavement does that. So these are great things, but I just want to point out, Article 19 is, nothing about that is new.
Right.
It's just to, it's just to actually put some, you know, we're not, we're not-
We're not encouraging it whatsoever. Encouraging it whatsoever. Sand gravel pits that already exist.
That already exists.
In case someone came to town with that.
We're just saying that if you are going to ask us to do it, we have some stricter guidelines on what's going to be there afterwards.
Right. And there's been no discussion, no talk, no applicants of that at all. But again, we want to kind of be ahead of the game as a town, and the stormwater management consultant thought that that language would be wise to add. Then Article 21 is to define the minimum standards for landscape buffer strips, again, trying to improve on the greenery around town. So this would be, you know, where you have a parking lot that's along a street, we don't want to have the parking lot go right up to the street. Right now, we already have some language in our bylaw that requires like a 10-foot grass strip minimum. This just gets into more detail about planting trees, where to plant trees. Don't put a tree that's going to block a driver's view, obviously, or interfere with sightlines or utility lines, but we want to make sure that the minimum design standards, if you're going to build something in Abington, it's going to look nice and it's going to be also safe but aesthetic. And then also, those landscape areas can also be used as part of your stormwater management design, meaning let the water run into a grassed area instead of a catch basin perhaps. All the engineers would have to submit that and get that approved by the towns engineer. Article 22, furthering that, just adds simple language that says, there's already a section in Section 17563 that talks about surface water drainage. And surface water drainage, again, is water that hits the ground but hits an impervious surface, like a roof or pavement, and runs somewhere. So they have to design it to catch that water and treat it so it doesn't flood a neighbor. So that's usually done in the form of catch basins. Sometimes it's open swales, but this added language just says that you can also use green roofs on commercial industrial buildings. So that typically doesn't happen unless it's a larger building, but we're putting it in there to encourage any potential thing that might come down the road in the future. The design engineer could propose to use a green roof. So instead of letting the water hit the roof and then go down into a drainage system, it feeds basically an open-air garden on the top of that roof. An opportunity for Abington to kind of encourage that and get ahead of the game and, again, have maybe less pavement or less underground drainage. Article 23 is designed to enhance, again, the protection and preservation of mature trees pursuant, again, to the stormwater management goals. Planning Board did a lot of work on this over the last two or three years, just basically, again, trying to encourage, first of all, to restrict the amount of larger trees that can just be clear-cut at will, but also it dictates what is required to replace some of those trees. And currently, our bylaw is pretty straightforward and really an older addition like many other towns, says if you make a subdivision, you have to put street trees up in a line right down along the sidewalk. We see that in some of the newer subdivisions. This now gives the developer and the planning board a little bit more flexibility to say, sometimes it's not the nicest-looking or most appropriate, depending on the topography or the type of trees that are in the area, in that you, it might be a combination of some street trees, or it might be groves of trees that the developer is required to either preserve or to plant. And the planning board is also putting together a list of approved trees, there's certain trees that are not indigenous to this area that we don't want brought in, or some that are known to cause safety problems. So it just gives, again, the board and the designer the flexibility to come up with a good plan that will be attractive for the town and that 10, 20, 30 years later is really, as those trees mature, it's really going to be kind of a nice-looking, not only to drive by, but a good, nice place to live. So that's been a lot of work in Article 23. The planning board seeks your approval of those upgrades so that they have a little bit more of an opportunity to look at the future and kind of design for it and require a developer to just put a little bit more effort into what it will look like and not just make a row of trees. So those are the five planning board amendments, sorry, the zoning amendments put forth by the planning board. And then we come to our final, our final article, which is Article 24. We alluded to this one earlier, Authorization of Preservation Restriction on Memorial Bridge at Island Grove. Again, a 300-year-old bridge, 300-foot-long bridge, I'm sorry, built in 1912 by the residents of Abington, and it is in desperate need of repair and restoration. And the town has been working on this for several years now. As Scott mentioned earlier, we've done some engineering studies to determine what needs to be repaired or replaced. And we are trying to fund, in an earlier article, now the kind of construction bid documents in order to qualify for some potential state grants to pay for all or part of the actual renovation work. But we've been told by, or strongly suggested by the Massachusetts Historical Commission to enact this protective provision in order to qualify for those grants. Is that right?
Yep, exactly. You know, again, we're doing as much as we can to seek outside grants to fund this project, and that was what was recommended to us, one of the, you know, one of the ways to qualify for those grants would be to put this restriction on. And basically, what it will say, the restriction is what we intend to do anyways, which is just, you know, bring the bridge back to what it looked like. You know, we want to use the same materials, which largely is quite a bit of concrete involved in there.
Right.
But the railings, we'd love to want those railings to come back and look like they did originally.
Yeah.
So it's not a difficult lift, it's not a bad restriction. We're still allowed to make the ADA improvements that we want to make.
Great.
So it's, yeah, it's kind of an easy one.
The jewel of Abington, the Island Grove Pond, the Island Grove Pool, the Island Grove Park, and of course, the bridge here, it's the Memorial Bridge, so-
And it's nice because we're getting rid of a lot of the weeds.
That's right.
Finally, that program's going forward.
Glad, there's an opportunity for us to spread that word. If you could give the viewers at home a little more information about what to expect coming this spring.
Yeah, so the, we, did we fund that with CPA?
CPA money, yeah.
CPA money, yeah. So again, great use of CPA money that we brought in a company that is going to use a herbicide, I guess it is, and it will kill the fanwort or keep it from growing. So the first treatment, I believe, is going to go in in the spring. You know, I think it'll take a little bit of time, but you shouldn't see as much growth of it, and then over the next couple of years, we should have it looking-
Yeah, it's very interesting. I was just reading more about this. The fanwort, if you go by Island Grove, you see, it used to be, you know, years gone by, it was just a beautiful, clear pond out there, but now you see a lot of vegetation that's kind of clogging up, especially around the perimeters. Or if you look off the bridge, you can see this growth. So this herbicide, this chemical treatment from this company is designed to kill off this invasive fanwort, it's called that, weed. Been very successful in other towns, and it's much more effective than trying to go in and just chop it all off, because by chopping it up, you just kind of spread out more of the fanwort, and then it just kind of comes right back at you. And I've been told that you'll know it's working if you see the fanwort, the existing vegetation's saturated in pink in about five to six weeks after the application. And I believe they're going to try to do the first application in April or May.
May sounds right, yeah.
May, and they're going to put up signs all around the perimeter of the pond just to let people know, you don't want to go swimming after they put in the application, not that the pond is a place to go swimming. You can go in the Island Grove Pool if you want to go swimming, that's fed by a spring, it's different. But if you need any information, you can contact the town hall, but the signs will go up eventually, there'll be nice, bright signs. And then they'll come back about, I think it's about two months later, and do a second treatment to try to really knock it down and kind of restore the pond to its glory, really. It'll really look nice when it's all done. So a lot of things going on there in, at Island Grove.
Yeah, I think it's important to notice, you know, a lot of the things that we're doing over there, whether it's fixing the old fan stand or-
Yep, the pavilion, yeah.
Pavilion, yeah. You know, we're looking to update some fencing. There were requests to do an update to the bathhouses and the retaining wall. We pulled those off at Capital only because I need to do, we need to do a little more advanced work on it, but that'd probably be some projects that you're going to see going forward next year, and we're going to certainly look to use some Recovery Plan Act money for that, which would be, you know, whether it's rebuilding, building a new bathhouse and retaining wall in Snack Shack. But, you know, we've been making improvements on fields everywhere, which I hate to not mention that, and I'll mention it at town meeting. A lot of the opera funds have been going into the community in places where I think everybody gets a chance to enjoy it.
Yeah, I think you're going to see some nice things kind of coming up. The football and softball scoreboard is going to be replaced later this summer with American Rescue Plan funds. I mean, these were ordered last year, but it just takes time to get them. And then the baseball field was redone with American Rescue Plan funds, and the softball field's going to be done with CPA funds and Rescue Plan funds. April's going to be a very busy month for Abington residents. April 3rd, Monday, April 3rd, is the town meeting, 7:00 at the auditorium. But also, circle your calendar for April 15th. I believe it's a Sat-, it is a Saturday. It's going to be the townwide yard sale, starting right at North School, sponsored by Abington Celebrates. It's a great idea. If you want to also have your own personal yard sale, if you make a donation to Abington Celebrates for $20, they'll put you on a list and a map that they're going to hand out to everyone who comes to the North School main yard sale to encourage people to stop at your yard sale. If you want to get more information, go to abbingtencelebrates@gmail.com to ask more information. Or if you'd like to donate good quality items for resale, that you donate to Abington Celebrates and they'll sell it at North School on April 15. Again, send an email to abbingtencelebrates@gmail.com. So it's April 15th, rain date is April 16th. Also, circle your calendars for the last Saturday in April, April 29th. That is the day of your town elections, where all Abington residents will be asked to go down to the Beaverbrook School at the end of Ralph Hamlin Lane. Polls open just in Abington from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM for voting. There are a couple of races this year. We have selectmen, we have incumbent Alex Bezanson is running for reelection, and we have two new candidates, Suzanne Justburg and Kevin Donovan. Those three people are running for two seats on the Board of Selectmen. School Committee incumbent Christopher Coyle is running for reelection, and we also have Nicole Emery and Melanie Whitney. Those three people are running for two seats. And then Planning Board, we have incumbent Bruce Hughes is running for reelection, and Michelle Kearney is running against Bruce, there's two seats, oh, sorry, there's one seat with two candidates in that one. And then, of course, there's some other uncontested races, which always would appreciate your vote. That is, again, Saturday, April 29th, polls are open from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Get out there and try to cast your ballot. It'll take you about five minutes down at the Beaverbrook School at the end of Ralph Hamlin Lane. A lot of things going on in April. Check out the town website at all times if you want to kind of get updates. More importantly, get on the town website and get on the contact email list, because the town sends out updates when big issues come up, whether it be trash issues, town meeting reminders, any sort of emergency that might be coming up. It's great to be on that email list to get the facts as quickly as possible. Scott, any parting words?
No.
Before we wrap up?
I think that's it. Like you said, I think we probably took more time than we should take at town meeting.
We did. A lot to say, but hopefully this was helpful to you. And when you get there on April 3rd, we'll get rolling as soon as we count the 100, get the 150 quorum. My job is to try to keep that meeting moving as quickly as possible while also giving sufficient time for any sort of debate and questions to make you feel comfortable that you're voting confidently and with an educated vote.